Now we have a public hearing, don't we?
Yes.
Is it good to vote?
Well, I guess.
Yeah, I'll ask me.
Well.
Did you overhear now?
Okay, thank you. All right, please rise for our invitation. Plaid by David.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day today and our many blessings. Father, I thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this meeting today. And I thank you for those who are in attendance, the families that are represented here today. And Father, I ask that you be with Judge Reese, Mr. Pearson, Commissioner Barton, as they meet here today to make important decisions for you and for Van Zand County. Father, I just ask that you watch over all of us as we battle through this heat right now. Just give us, give us all patience and just watch over us and our health as we move forward. Father, I ask that you be with us as we carry on with our responsibilities and forgive us of our sins and all this. Pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. All right, pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pledge to the Texas flag. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you.
You made me see it. All right, we'll call this meeting to an end at nine oh three. And I would like to remind you to please silence your cell phones if you have one. And I'll announce that we do have a forum. Commissioner Brad is in training today, will not be with us. So item number two, general announcements. Do we have any general announcements? I would like to announce that the precinct chairs of precinct two, the four individuals there made their selection on who, on the name of the individual that they want to put on the ballot for the November election, and that person was Cliff Williams. And as I stated previously, I was not going to appoint anyone until they had made their selection. And I do intend on appointing Cliff to the position. We are currently talking to him to figure out when is a good time for him to wrap up his current activities and to start. So it'll most likely be sometime in September that he will get appointed and sworn into office. So that's the announcement I have there. Are there any public comments? There's no public comments? All right.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Let's recognize our Sheriff Joe Carter.
Yes, sir. Sorry, I didn't know what, which I don't know. I advise y'all to pass on everybody. Let you know last week we had our jail inspection and Michael Brad with Texas jail, Texas Missional Jail standards, ten year inspection. It's pretty much. No other case. It's, it's pretty much takes it most of the day. You're going to do the inspection. The inspection went well. It is a jail. It's always going to have some issues. We did good on our inspection. Our staff up there, Captain Sucker, Lieutenant Silva, and our entire staff up there done outstanding job. They did that somewhat where it should be, still not complete where it should be yet, but they're ahead and shoulders above where we were when we started. At the close of our meeting, Judge Reese was invited over to, because he has a part of his duties, he has to sign off on the inspection they do. And our jail inspector during the conversation with me and Judge, highly advised county begin to look at what they're going to do with that facility. Because the age, wear, tear on the building where it, that built jails completed in ninety-two. We're looking for jails on thirty-two, probably getting closer to thirty-three years old. Just typical wear and tear what has those jails. Highly urges to look at, and he's going to build a new one. But how is, look, urge us to start looking what we're doing with the facility, whether it can remodel there or something new in the future. So, or to pass it on again to staff out there, the work they do. We forget sometimes jobs to get to go home at five o'clock on weekends or holidays. That's twenty-four hour, seven day a week operation. At six o'clock evening, we'll love to wait for supper. We have a whole new shift of people coming in, twelve deputies and jail staff. So I'm pretty blessed. Folks, we got, got a long way to go. We're good when we work. Anyway, I want to pass it on to you. Thank you very much.
Very good. Item number four, consent agenda. Consent agenda are items considered reaching up to Commissioner's floor that will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the county judge or commissioner requests that item be removed from the content consent agenda. Consider separately, and I do believe you don't want to remove, but we want to, Ms. Hill would like to make comment on the line of transfers that are into this particular.
Yes, Judge, thank you. I just wanted to make the court aware that in the line that I could see of precinct commissioner that the ten digits in mine had started with a budget amount of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And with the budget of in the secure that have been within today, we brought that line out to one hundred and ninety-three thousand. I think a lot of it is coming from the bachelor, the county roads. Back in the shade.
Three hundred thousand dollars of that was for road bridge material.
Goldberts.
Goldberts, asphalt, rock, you name it. That's what that is for.
So. All right, is there motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move, Pearson.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made in second. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion passed. Item number five, discuss and consider appointing Heather Haines and Jordan Schilling to the Van Zand County Historical Commission. And Heather, would you like to stand up and introduce yourself to everyone? This is Heather Haines.
Hi, Heather Haines. I'm a medical director for getting the impact of the origin process.
And Jordan, would you like to stand and introduce yourself?
Schilling on the service library at the library, and Heather and I are part of the leadership.
Okay. Elvis, do you, you have anything to say?
Thank you.
You, you picked, you got some great candidates here. So, so is there a motion to appoint Heather Haines and Jordan Schilling to the Van Zand County Historical Commission?
No motion. Second, Pearson.
All right, motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Ah. I only vote in the case of the tie. Motion passes. All right, item number six, we will now go into a public hearing on a proposed budget concerning local government code one-one-one dash, the dot, rather, zero-zero-seven for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. This public hearing is, was published in the paper. And to be today, the proposed budget has been posted on our website. And so we will now go into the public at nine-ten. Okay, is there anybody that wishes to speak on the budget? That.
Stand here.
Whatever's convenient for you. The cameras don't move.
Oh, that's the thing for me. All I'd like to say about this is budgets and tax rates and all those sorts of things all tend to go hand in hand. And so on this particular budget, I'd like to point out something that the government just published for July, the consumer price index for the north and northeast Texas. Just in this year, food prices have gone up two percent, eating outs gone up four point three percent, electricity gone up fourteen point five percent, gasoline gone up five point three percent, and natural gas gone up twenty-five point nine percent. Now, for the average citizen in this county, they can't go to their boss and say, hey, I'll spend more money this year, so you're going to pay me. So in this particular case, I think the citizens of this county have been saddled enough with taxes and everything and all of this. What I would ask y'all to do, after looking at the budget, is go back, sharpen your pencils a little bit more to help keep the budget more in line. So even if you do, unknown revenue on taxes, come back down and give all of us a break too. Y'all are fixing to have some really tough decisions to make as, as our sheriff said, with the jail. I noticed in here also the part of the budget, got some increases for, for salaries. I would agree with that for law enforcement, for the jail. For the rest of the elected officials, I put it this way. When you came into office, you knew how much you were going to get paid. You needed more money. You may not have run. But to accept that, and again, bottom line, modify this budget, pencil it down a little bit, and make sure that we don't get saddled with those expenses.
Yeah, thank you very much. We did put in the budget a five percent increase for employees for across the board. So, are there any other public comments? All right, if not, I will close the public hearing at nine thirteen. Yep, and I am rather. And now we need to decide whether or not we want to approve the proposed budget. Oh, that's number six. Number seven, discuss, consider. We need to discuss number six on approving the proposed budget. And we have three options on approval. That is to reject it as it's been presented, to accept it as it has been presented, or to modify. And the modify allows us to make changes in it before we make the final acceptance. So is there a motion?
A motion to modify.
All right, there's a motion to accept the proposed budget.
Modify.
Modify. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. I'm assuming you said aye.
I, I did, but I was, I was confused at your statement, that, that you said the motion to accept. And then you said modify after that. My motion was to modify, not to. So that, that's what they're gonna do.
Motion is modified.
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir. And I vote yes to that.
Okay. So.
I don't.
Item number seven, discuss, consider approval of the proposed tax rate. Twenty twenty-four, take a record vote and set date of time for a public hearing on the tax rate. And again, this is just approving the proposed tax rate. We will have a public hearing at the next meeting. That representative next meeting, next official meeting on the twenty.
September eleventh.
September eleventh, okay. All right. Okay. All right, is there, is there a motion? And I might have to get to it real quick to tell you what. Proposed tax rate is point four-two-nine-zero-one-nine. That is opposed. The known revenue tax rate is point four-zero-four-eight-three-four. And the voter approval rate is point four-two-nine-zero-two-zero. Those are the three rates. So is there a motion to accept the proposed tax rate of point four-two-nine-zero-one-nine?
A motion. Second.
All right, motion made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number eight, discuss and consider setting the salary for Van Zand County elected officials per local government code one-fifty-two-point-zero-one-three. At the last meeting, we actually proposed them, and this, in this meeting, we're actually going to set the salaries as indicated, and those were published in the paper. And is there any motion to approve the elected official salaries?
All motion.
Is there a second?
Oh. Yes, sir, but we need to tie it down, to prove it as printed here. So we don't want to read every one of these, but we need to, we don't just need to accept it. We need to, need to make a motion as printed, Brandon, so we're, so.
As printed in the paper, as published in the paper.
Yes.
Correct, which is what we see on our screen. So the motion is to set the salaries of Van Zand County elected officials as, as printed in the paper.
And I'll second to it.
All right, so any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number nine, approve the financial statements for emergency service district number one for a matter of record to be entered in the commission for minutes. And as Keith pointed out, last time we did it, we don't approve, we take that for financial.
So move, Pearson.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All of them in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number ten, discuss, consider setting the twenty twenty-four Department of Motor Vehicles optional county fees. These are the fees that we are allowed to charge and which we're not changing the fees in any way from last year. We're just maintaining them. And that includes a ten dollar road, county road and bridge fee and a child safety fee of a dollar fifty. And I think those are the two fees, correct? Yes. So is there a motion to, to set the DMV fees as, or to, as the same as last year?
All motion. Second, Pearson.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss, consider authorizing the county judge to sign sub-recipient agreement for T D M administered grant awards. This is the, this is the agreement that allows us to receive FEMA money for some of the disaster declaration. It is a fifty-page document that specifies all the federal guidelines that we agree to adhere to. And ten pages of it is how, how they can come back and get money that they've already paid us if they deem that we haven't done it properly. So is there a motion to authorize county judge to sign sub-recipient agreement for T D M minister grants?
So move, Pearson.
All right, second.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss and consider approval of the Texas Feeding Texans for Meals on Wheels Ministry Home Deliver Meal Grant Program in the amount of eight thousand dollars. We help sponsor the Van Zand County Meals on Wheels Program and, and to the tune of eight thousand dollars in the next fiscal year. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number thirteen, discuss, consider and approve order of election for the November fifth general election.
Motion.
All right, motion made by Brandon Barton.
Second.
And second, is there any discussion? This is to allow us to, let me look at it real quick. So general election on November fifth, which includes the president, the senator, there's a whole host of ones of offices, both national, state, and local.
And this is the one the commissioners will be on, precinct two, correct?
That is correct, yes. And so all those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Item number fourteen, discuss, consider and approve the appointment of election judges and alternate judges for the November fifth twenty twenty-four general election. The party chairs have submitted a list of the election judges and alternate judges that will be working for the election in November in the early voting. And is there a motion to accept the list of candidates or a list of judges?
So move.
I'll second. All right, motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, that's, that's one everybody know. We don't choose these people. The, the Susan has something to do with it this year. Stripped out of parties.
Stripped from the parties, the Republican Party and the Democrat.
Okay, thank you. I just want everyone to know that.
And so all those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item fifteen, discuss, consider approval to ratify the auction of a twenty-ten Ford Grand Victoria VIN number two F A B P seven V B five A X one zero seven zero four three and a twenty-ten Chevrolet Tahoe N one G M F K one three zero eight nine R two six one seven two three using Renee Betts Auctioneers. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
All right, discussion?
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm confused on the ratify. Discuss, consider approval to ratify. Have they already been sold?
No, sir, they have not been sold. We have them up currently for auction. We didn't realize we hadn't got approval from the county court to find a, put it for auction. They have not sold, but they're on the auction block.
Okay, just so they're already listed.
Yes, sir.
With the other stuff that we.
Make sure we're doing what we're doing.
Yes.
You got approval now.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I need to get those vehicles going.
But that, I understand now. That's just what they're made of.
Yes, sir.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number sixteen, discuss, consider the sale of the twenty-twenty Dodge Ram one-time flat bed VIN number three C seven W R F B J eight L G one-one-zero-two-two-zero V Z I V ninety-two ninety-one for thirty-eight thousand dollars from Road and Bridge Precinct one to Road and Bridge Precinct four.
Yes, this is mine. Precinct one was going to put this truck in the auction. And we went and looked at it, and it has fifty thousand miles on it, and it's a it's a very good truck. And we looked at the blue book value, and this is what it was worth, and I have one or two that I do want to put in auction at a later date, and I figured this would be a good, good truck to replace it with, and I use my contingency money to purchase it with. So I have a motion that precinct, make the motion that precinct four buy this truck from precinct one.
All right, motion made in second.
Second, Pearson.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider authorizing the county judge to sign a contract amendment number one for the engineering services to Steve Stevens Engineering for the execution of contract number C D V twenty-three dash zero two-seven-three between Van Zand County and the Texas Department of Agriculture regarding the twenty twenty-four Texas Community Development Block Grant Program for Water Improvements. They, they left some pages out of the previous contract that we approved. And I informed them they would have to get it, get the pages that were left out approved, and that's what this is. The amendment is adding those pages back in to say. So is there a motion?
So move, Pearson.
All right, all right, motion made in second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number eighteen, discuss and consider acceptance of a check from the city of Fruitvale in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars for payment of services rendered for inter-local agreements.
Yes, sir, this is over in precinct one. Mr. Pratt, like all of us, we try to help the cities within our precincts as much as we can. And so Mr. Pratt does some work for the city of Fruitvale, and this check is a, is a donation back to the, to the county for that work that was done. I make a motion, we accept this check and, and put in precinct three, Road and Bridge.
All right, second.
I'll put in precinct one, Road and Bridge.
All right, you admitted the motion.
Saying it was only one call back there.
All those in favor of accepting the check and putting it in precinct one, Road and Bridge, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number nineteen, discuss, consider acceptance of the check from the city of Edgewood in the amount of thirty-six thousand one seventy-six eighty saying it's for payment of services rendered for inter-local agreement.
Yes, sir, this same song, just another verse. It's what he did for the city of Edgewood. A motion that we accept this check for thirty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty cents. And it goes in the precinct one, Road and Bridge.
All right, motion made in second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number twenty, discuss and consider allowing Bullard Brothers Properties to make improvements to Van Zand County Road thirty-one twenty-three.
Yes, sir, this is kind of road thirty-one twenty-three, and it is, but it is in precinct one. And Mr. Bullard, one of Bullard Brothers is in the audience today. And they have come to the court, came, went to Mr. Loprad. And this road now is, how long is the Nathan?
Thirteen hundred, approximately, approximately twelve hundred and thirty feet.
Yes, so that, that's how long it is. It's a dirt road now, partially, a little bit of rock on the eight fifty-nine end of it. And so they've made an offer to the county for them to concrete this road and, and then pay for it. It, the total estimate is two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand four hundred dollars. And ooh, we could use more people doing that. And so I make a motion, we accept this donation of two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand four hundred dollars and, and allow them, they're going to do the construction and the laboring and everything for this. And, and then Mr. Loprad will be overseeing the work. So I'll make a motion, we allow that to happen and accept the donation.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, Nathan.
You bet. Item number twenty-one, discuss and consider approval of the Warren Angus Ferris State Slot One Flat located on Van Zand County Road sixteen oh three in precinct one.
Yes, sir, this is precinct one. It's a one lot subdivision. It's, it's gone through Brian. Everything's looked at. It's all good. Only thing, exception to it in my motion that I'll ask to waive the the final fee, the, the, not the filing fee, but the final subdivision fee because of, he's paid that money to Mr. Abbott. So we, we always try to give credit for the money up to our normal fee of when they pay Mr. Abbott. So I make a motion, we accept this for filing and waive the, waive the final fee.
All right, motion made. And is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye, opposed by sign, motion passes. Item number twenty-two, discuss and consider approval of county cottages of Grand Celine Plant. Located at Van Zandt County Road one, uh, one-one-zero in precinct one.
Yes, sir, this is another one over in precinct one, it's an eight-lot subdivision, it's gone to Mr. Abbott, he's approved everything. And, uh, he's, he's, uh, we've got a receipt from Mr. Abbott where he paid him, so I make a motion, we accept this for filing purposes. And waive the final, uh, fee here, that's counted.
Second.
All right, motion is made second, any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye, uh, all opposed by sign, motion passes. Item number twenty-three, discuss consider approval of lasting legacy estates, face one flat. Located on Van Zandt County Road twenty-six twenty-four, Van Zandt County Road twenty-six twenty-three in precinct two.
Yes, sir, this is, this is one that, that we're, we're filing up on, it started through Mr. Milton, but it's all gone through Brian. It's a, uh, eleven-lot subdivision, and, uh, it's, uh, it's all good. We've got a letter from Brian, I make a motion, we accept it for filing and waive the, the final fee at the county.
All right, all right, motion made second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed by sign, motion passes. Item twenty-four, discuss and consider approval of re-subdivision of lot one A and lot one B. Lot one of the Keys Estates Edition Re-Clad located in Van Zandt County Road thirty-four, eleven, in precinct three.
Yes, sir, this lot was, uh, uh, the platform was, was revi- revived, uh, revived, uh. Several months ago when Will's Point was still doing their plant revisions, uh. Since then, Will's Point has said, whatever the county does is okay with them, so they have come back now. And all they're doing is, is making this lot a little bit bigger, they're not making, they're not creating more lots, they're adding seventy-five feet on every side of this. Uh, so let's say, it's very simple, I, I hate that, that it even had to come to us on a boundary line change, but. That's the way it's written, they have to, so I make a motion that we accept this, this revision, and, uh. They paid their application fee of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, I make a motion, we accept it, and we waive the final two-hundred-and-fifty dollar, uh, fee.
Second.
All right, uh, a motion made second, any further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed by sign, motion passes. Item twenty-five, discuss and consider approval of to be determined Van Zandt County Road forty-seven one. Or track one, then wait or text seven-five-seven-five-four for filing purposes only.
Yes, uh, this contract was signed on June the twelfth, and the putting process began, it didn't finish until, uh. The, the beginning or, uh, middle of July, and, uh, since it was signed on June twelfth, and the, and the, the process was started. I'm just asking to get this grandfathered into the old subdivision rules, not the new ones, since it was, uh, it was signed and, uh, ready to go on June twelfth. Which, the other day was June twenty-sixth, so I'm just asking to get this approved for purposes only for the subdivision rules of the last year. I'll make that motion.
Second, Pearson.
All right, motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, uh, opposed by sign, motion passes. Item twenty-six, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second, all right, we are adjourned. Or, everyone, I'll say aye, baby, I, we are adjourned, thank you all.